If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. All of the members of the city council are present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Go to the minutes of August nineteenth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, or I'm sorry, Councilor Kaler?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner? Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries. Go to the payments and claims, we have a resolution before you. International Falls transfers going from the 101 general fund in the amount of $1,142.46 and that's coming from the 812 lodging tax fund. Accounts payable, International Falls claims of $617,502.66. Airport commission claims of $78,268.40. And airport major capital project claims of $95,001.12 for a total accounts payable of $790,772.18. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller? Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none?
Hearing none.
No discussion.
Easy.
Well, I got another meeting.
Hearing no questions, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Go to audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward that's not on the agenda? Please. Can you come up and state your name and informate, or address?
So, Nathan Myers, 1310 Ninth Avenue. For the past six weeks, because of medical issues, I've been having to walk around town. What I've been noticing is there are a lot of areas in town where you physically cannot walk on the sidewalk. You have to walk on the street because the bushes, hedges are so overgrown that you can't walk. There are also vehicles parked on the sidewalks that you have to walk out into the street to get around. Just coming up here tonight for the meeting on Ninth Avenue, there are three vehicles parked out into the sidewalk that you have to walk down the street. It creates an unsafe condition for pedestrians walking around. Especially elderly that are trying to get exercise. They will have to hop off the curb and then hop back onto the curb or just, like I've been doing, walking down the street, which is very dangerous.
City administrator, is there, who would we have at the city that would be, is that the building official for the bushes and the hedges? Would it be police department?
Bushes and hedges, we would work with Public Works. They would look into whether they're in the right of way and then possibly working with then the housing light folks to ticket if needed, but I would start with Public Works, see what's in the right of way, what would be our responsibility first. As far as the vehicles over sidewalks, that is police department enforcement.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything to bring forward? There'll also be an opportunity later in the meeting. We'll go to old business, we have the second and final reading of an ordinance, section two dash nine, salaries of the mayor and council. Chair would entertain a motion to have the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilor Holden? Discussion? And when would these take effect? It has to be after a, after an election, so this would be in January?
January 1, 2025.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The salaries themselves are not going up, it's per diem rate. It would be $55 per additional meeting, which legitimately, we have one meeting a month on the third Wednesday, or third Monday of the month. That's when we kind of break out a vast majority of our meetings, specialty meetings. Yep. Hearing no other questions, call the question.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote no as well. Motion carries, three for the motion, two against the motion. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda. Approve the separation of employment with Zach Schofield, effective August 21st, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, we have a motion by Councilor Buller?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor, I cannot think of your name, Councilor Kaler?
That takes throwing you off.
Yeah, it is, it really is. All right, there's no, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we'll go to new business. Sharon Ball, resident, wants to discuss an incident at the Falls Bass Tournament. Do you want to please come on?
I really do this, so. So, I just had a couple of questions because nobody ever told me, and I was one of the people involved. I filmed the cutting of the tree, the whole thing. And nobody ever told me anything, and I was just wondering what the council is doing with it. Did the council approve for the bass fishing tournament to start cutting on trees, even though it's against city law, state law, and federal law?
That day in the park, Public Works was in the park, cutting down, cutting tree limbs for the vendors.
Well, I was right there filming it, no, and they weren't the ones.
They were not the ones that, that, that cut that particular tree.
They get permission ahead, because I have one of the bass fishing tournament people coming over and saying the city had given them permission, but that would not be possible unless you had a city council meeting and you all approved it, correct?
No, our, our, no, Public Works, Public Works is the one who did scare.
Okay, was it approved?
They were cutting the trees down that day for the vendors.
I was sitting right there, sir.
I, I understand that.
That's okay. So, that's, that's approved then? You can, they can do that without consent, correct? I just want to get this on record, you're saying it can be done without?
Betty, please help me with this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Earlier in the day, Public Works was working with vendors. They had trimmed trees all along the vendor area. That specific vendor at that time had not spoken with Public Works, but as soon as Public Works seen the situation, they went right over there, spoke with them, explained to them that, you know, they can't just do it themselves. They asked if they needed anything further, that they would assist them.
Okay, so they did not have permission, which according to the state statute and federal law states that they cannot cut down, cut branches off of any tree without city council's approval in advance. That is what your statute reads, I would think you would know that.
That's false.
Pardon me?
That's false.
No, it's not false. You can look it up, right on, on.
I understand the statute you're looking at, but that's city.
But did they approve it, yes or no?
Do you want me to answer it? The answer is, it's not on city property.
I already know the answer. Did, you just said they did not approve it ahead, correct?
They don't need prior approval.
That was the answer. Okay, that they did not have approval when they started cutting those branches down, that's my only question. Yes or no? Did they have permission to cut those branches off?
The answer is yes, they had permission.
You just said, okay, so which one of you is, is?
They had permission. You are, if you let me answer the question.
Okay, I will be sending this video in then.
Would you like her to answer the question, please?
The whole thing is publicized.
No, because this is live.
They had permission, maybe not before, to answer your first question. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
Then stop talking.
Excuse me, but I'm a citizen, are you yelling at me and telling me to stop talking?
Did I raise my voice?
Yes, you are.
Do you want to see me raise my voice?
Would you like to?
Here's the answer.
On TV, right?
Yes. Sharon, I've worked, I know you don't recognize me, but I've gone to your business for years, I know you very well.
That's fine.
And I understand you're upset.
Care about anyone?
I understand.
Sharon, if you'd like to hear the answer, let her answer the question.
I understand you're upset. The answer is, did they have permission prior to starting cutting? The answer would be no.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
That is not a violation of state statute if the city comes in after and says it's fine, because you know who has to issue the citation and who has to press that charge? The property owner.
Okay, well, that's what you say. So, the city is the, is the, I'm just making sure that they did not have prior permission, right? And if you look at the statute, and I'll, I'll be sending this into the state with the statute, with all the film, okay? I was trying to handle it here, but apparently, we don't follow the statute.
Who are you sending it to, the attorney general? Do you want me to forward it for you?
No, I don't need you to do anything, ma'am.
Okay, I can help.
I'm an investigator, I can do it myself, and I don't need your help.
Okay, I thought you came here for help.
No, I came to, and I got my answer. No one approved it ahead. They did not have permission. So, my next question is, in the future, what do we do so that we're not defacing the trees in order to make room for vendors?
I think they're cutting trees right now, because, and then this man here was actually upset that trees were in the way.
Okay. Okay, I expected that answer, but you already answered my question. They did not have prior consent. I would expect the council to maybe do your research, because I guarantee you I'm doing mine. I'm working from, with another mayor in another town, and they're helping me submit this along with all the film, which the bass fishing tournament representative came right up and said to me, I gave them permission. It's all on video. I don't do anything that isn't on video or I'm not being recorded. So, what I feel here is hostility, because apparently there's a statute that nobody's followed. And in my estimation, in this town, there needs to be more consistency with everyone. So that everyone knows statute, everyone's on the same page. As far as I'm concerned, if you would have seen, well, I offered to give you guys video, you didn't want it. So, we've established, that's all I wanted to do. We've established that there was no prior authorization given to that party, and that's all I asked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mayor, may I ask?
Yes.
And you, Sharon, can you tell me what statute exactly you're referring to?
I will send it to you.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, and you don't know the statute?
She's not the city attorney, I am.
Off the top of my head, there's lots of them.
But you know the statute, right?
I know exactly what you're referring to, and it doesn't apply in this situation.
Well, it's pretty open, and I have talked to people in the state, and I have talked to federal people, and it is a statute that's supposed to be holding, post people should have never had a saw in their hands, that tree should have never been cut without prior permission.
So, what do you want it done?
And what I want done is for everybody to be on the same page, we all need to be.
What does that mean?
That means that every, the law applies, ignorance of the law is not a defense.
Do you want a citation issued?
I would like that, I would like to see some action taken. Because one person, just because a city worker was doing something around the trees, okay, does not give those people consent. I was harassed by them, I had to shut down my booth, I lost $5,000. Okay, I'm running a fostering program, which I pay everything myself. I am a citizen, I'm a taxpayer, and these people were cutting down the tree, and I started videoing it because I knew nobody would believe me. And there was a lot. And that video went out, and people could not believe it, I had over 5,000 views so far on it. That's how many people were disgruntled by it. I had a mayor call me and say, no, they needed to give them, okay, I will go along with the city. You said the city can cut down branches, I understand. These are private citizens coming up with a handsaw. And sawing off large parts of that tree and defacing the tree, because if you don't cut those with the chainsaw, the tree will start to deteriorate from the branches, okay? So, my point here is that I just think, I think it could, I think somebody should receive a citation, I honestly do, because they did not have permission. And then they started yelling at me. And nobody came to my defense in the city, not one person. Not one person sent me any kind of information, although I was the person affected. I paid for my spot, okay? And I have a business, I have a fostering business. And I do everything for free.
Fostering business, what is that?
I foster dogs, I take in dogs. I have a boarding business, and I was just told after running it for two hours, or two years, the day that I put in that I wanted to run for mayor, and I complained about fireworks being over my boarding business, suddenly I was told I needed a kennel license.
Well, ignorance of the law isn't, you just got done saying that.
And I filed for one, sir, but I did not know. That would have been nice, I hold a million dollar policy on my business, I have a business license with the state. So, these are the kind of things I'm talking about, it makes people feel like they don't matter, like small, small businesses, after I put $900,000 into that property and all the equipment, suddenly I'm told you need a kennel license. I did this in my ear, I got all that done, I went through zoning, nobody said a word, I was driving.
Did you go through zoning in International Falls when you came in and started the business?
No, because I, the, the county came, and right away, and started looking around, and they saw I was running a business, and they did my taxes, and they, they did my commercial and everything, so I thought, okay, you know, I don't keep up on these things, I'm a business owner, but, but.
It says, it says right in our, it says that you have to have a license for that.
I was very transparent about my business, so somewhere along the line, you would have thought somebody, the county, somebody would have said Sharon, and it doesn't matter, because I asked if I needed to close again, Betty said, no, I did not need. And I'm filing everything, but what I'm saying is, it's the heartbreak of the thing, because I am.
But it's the exact same situation as what just happened with you recording in the park. The people didn't know that what they did was, was incorrect.
And I expect to be held to the same standards as everyone else, and the day I found out was a day, I came right back when she had the paperwork,
Understood.
And I got it filled up.
And what I'm saying, but what I'm saying through all of this is, the people that cut down the tree, they didn't know that they were doing anything wrong. And we, we're not holding them to a higher standard or a lower standard.
I'm not expecting them to be fine. What I'm, all I asked for was transparency, that's all I asked for, transparency. You just sold me on video.
We had, we had, we.
That, and it's on TV, that they did not have prior permissions.
I understand that, but we've also talked to the folks that, that cut the tree down. We, we, if someone makes a mistake, we never said anything to everyone in the community that you didn't have a kenneling license. We're not gonna tell, we're not gonna tell everybody, no, stop, stop. But we're not telling everybody else of how it was handled with the person that cut the tree down. We're leaving that dignity and respect with the person that made a mistake, and we're handling this situation.
So, you're saying I was wrong, I was the wrong party to film as a citizen, which is my constitutional right with the ACLU, correct?
I, no, I'm saying, we don't have a, a, we don't have anything to talk to you about. We worked with that person, we're moving on in our agenda. Mr. Mayor, point of order? Absolutely, we're moving on.
Thanks for all your time, guys.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go to the 2024 taxi license for TK Taxi LLC. Tracy, do you want to come forward? Hi.
I'm Tracy Harmoning.
Trying to follow that up.
I can't.
Please take a seat by the, yeah.
Those folks online, and when it's recorded, have a harder time hearing if you're back close.
Yeah. Yes, please.
I'm Tracy Harmoning, and this is my husband Kurt Chishke. And we are, we applied to start a taxi business here in International Falls. It's just gonna be local, there's probably like a 50-mile radius that I'm looking at. I'm starting out very small, I have two vehicles to start with, and we'll see what happens from there. I think it would be a good addition to the community, just because I have worked for Randy Kennedy off and on for a couple of years, so I do know the business, and I do know what it entails and everything, but I, I think there's need for another service, really.
I, I do too. More is better. My, my question to you, it actually doesn't involve the, the license or anything like that. How are you gonna advertise, how are you gonna get your information out? How are people gonna know that you're, you're, you're in town and you're doing this?
I was waiting for this meeting, this was like kind of my last hurdle. I've done a lot of preparing through the insurance, and I've already got my business phone and my account and all this stuff. Kurt has made me some magnets that go on the side of my cars that say TK Taxi. And then they have, TK stands for Tracy Kurt, by the way. And then they have these cute little taxi things that go on the right-hand corner, just like Uber. You know Uber has those blue signs, well, this would, it says Taxi. Plus, I went to South North and I ordered 250 business cards. And I'm just gonna go around and give them to all the hotels, all the bars, of course. And, yeah, so it's just gonna be word of mouth, I don't.
So, one of the other things, and this is just a, a potential suggestion, I, I'm not getting into your business at all, but we do have, we do have, no, 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 this is just trying to make things better. So, we have a Lyft service in town. International Falls, about three years ago, ended up getting Lyft. We tried to get Uber into International Falls as well, but we never got Uber. But we do have Lyft, but we don't have any Lyft drivers that actually drive for it. So, that might be another opportunity if that works, but I have no clue, because it's over my head. But I just know that that is a service that is being provided, but we don't have drivers that maybe we could.
Right. Well, I'm actually an Uber driver. So, I brought my car to Duluth, and it went through inspection, and it passed. So, I can drive Uber anywhere in the state of Minnesota. And I actually went, I went to Duluth and I drove Uber like on a Friday night. I made like $300, it was absolutely crazy. But the demand here is, it's not there. I tried it. And I had told Randy Kennedy about it, and I said, I want to give this a shot, you know? It's, it's more of a younger crowd thing, I mean, I don't want to say it that way, but they're pretty savvy on their phones, and they're the ones that are ordering Uber and Lyft and all that stuff, but it just did not go over here. So, I have already tried that.
Okay, well, fair enough, I, I just, I just want you to succeed.
Thank you.
That's the only thing, I just want you to succeed. Please.
I know the airport is always short of rentals out there too, they can't, the planes come in, they can't get cars. So, I mean, I think it will help an awful lot there too, for you to be in there.
Any, okay, backing up, any questions on the actual license? All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the taxi license.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner, because I can't remember Kaler's name. All right, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero, you are approved. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Tracy, you want to stop in the office tomorrow, we'll get your paperwork finished?
Yep.
Approve the 2024 homecoming parade request from ISB 361, chair would entertain a motion to approve that? We have a motion by Councilor Buller? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden? Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we'll go to a resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for PCA Hunting and Raffle Con, Hunting and Raffle Contest Incorporated to conduct a raffle on November 11th, 2024, at PCA 400 Second Street. Chair would entertain a motion for that?
So, move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller? Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we go to the order of a removal or repair for a building at 1008 Third Street. City Attorney?
Jared's not here with pictures or anything like that, but this is the stow property. I don't know if any of you have driven by it lately. It's, they were buying it on contract for deed, they've now left it, so it's essentially, no one's in there really, and it's in pretty bad shape. I've had a couple neighbors call too, aside from Jared sending it over my way. I did try to do it, excuse me, with an agreement, that they just agreed to have it torn down, I can't find them. So, we'll have to go through this order, and then we'll probably have to publish if I can't find them before I have to serve them.
When, when you're saying can't find them, are you talking about the stalls or the person that they walked away from, contract for deed?
The contract for deed people we did find.
Okay.
Stalls, we had an address in mind, but we were not able to actually get anything to them.
But if it, if it was a walked away contract for deed, wouldn't it go back to the original owner?
Only if they cancel the contract for deed.
Okay. That's why we have you, I just have questions. All right, so, uh, chair, chair would entertain a motion for that remove or repair.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, and immediate second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we are going to, by motion, close the meeting in accordance to Minnesota statute, 13D dash dot zero five subsection two B, for the preliminary consideration of allegations against an individual subject to the council's authority. So, the chair would entertain a motion to close this meeting.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller? Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. We don't actually have anything really exciting on the, the agenda the rest of the night anyways, guys, but you have to leave. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
All right, we're all good then? All right, we are coming out of a closed meeting, and again, that closed meeting was to consider allegation against an individual subject to the council's authority. And at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to provide separation of employment of Stephen Donabauer, effective today's date, September 3rd. And chair would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller? Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. With that separation with the city, we're gonna add on to the agenda at this time to open the position and advertise for a mechanic for Public Works. Chair, we have a motion by Councilor Buller?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner? Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Any other business to come before the council? That was, that was pretty, pretty strong mill from the city administrator, we're done here today. All right, we'll go to the reports of the city administrator, city attorney, and department heads, city administrator.
Yeah, I have nothing for them, thank you.
City attorney?
I have nothing.
Uh, department heads?
Uh, just wanted to add, Mayor, we did have a power outage Sunday night in the city, and I did not have a chance to speak to the administrator today. I hope this, I don't know if any other areas in the city were affected, but we did have some damaged equipment on our radio staff and stuff, kind of high-risk stuff, so I don't know if there's any other damage in the city, or if there are possible, I don't have any idea.
Okay, just for the folks that couldn't hear, the, the police, or the fire chief just said that we had some damaged radios potentially through the power outage that we had this last weekend. City administrator, do you have anything else to add with, with that?
I have not heard of any other damaged items, however, I can reach out to the different departments, and we can make a list of items, and we can turn it over to our insurance.
Okay.
Follow up from there.
Worth checking.
Right, absolutely.
Perfect. Anything else, chief? All right, we'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions? Anybody?
I, I just wanted to say that the Labor Day picnic yesterday went off without a hitch, it was fantastic. It's not as busy at the very beginning as it used to be. When they started at four, there was hundreds of people there right at the beginning, and now that they start at three, it's a slow trickle until it gets crazy busy, but I was informed today that they had 1,500 plates.
informed today that they had fifteen hundred plates, and they ran out of plates, so that tells me that they had to have served at least fifteen hundred hot dogs. So.
At the airport, we had Airport Commission meeting last week, and Adam Cole gave a talk at the end of it, and after we left, I didn't really know what his questions were, or for sure who was going to follow through with what he had questions about, and this is about the annexing is what it is. Sorry, I didn't say that sooner, but I did spend some time with Betty today, just to explain to her what took place there, so that maybe she could look into it and, and find out what, what was, there were some requests made, but it wasn't, was it to us as a city, was it to the Airport Commission? After the meeting, they just thought it was a good report, and they thought, well, who's he addressing, you know? Because his, he's got two, his, two commissioners are on there, too, so they apparently knew, must have known about it already, but I just, I was a little confused after we left, and I should have thought of it sooner, but I didn't. But Betty said she checked.
Yeah, and I did not get a chance to call him today, so I will by the end of the week get ahold of him and find out if there's something they're asking of us, or if he's, you know, looking at the commission itself, you know, to answer some of those questions.
One of the things was, he liked the beans that we were, went through the property, individual properties that we wanted to annex, and there we found, found some flaws in some of the descriptions. He wanted to go back on the part that already is annexed and check those and see what kind[1612.33]